Planning Commission to the 11th, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. McLean, could you please take the roll?
Yes, Buckler.
Here.
Kempner.
Here.
Murad. Patterson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Shadle.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Trotto.
Here.
Kepelansky.
Here. Thank you.
Mr. Murad Zepson and the council liaison informed me that he would be absent this evening as well.
Okay. So we'll move on then to approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes or additions or motion to approve?
One change, Madam Chair. I'd like to add one item under Communications. Have some email correspondence before you from resident Charles Tyrell regarding the proposed overlay district.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes or motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McLean?
Buckler.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
And Kepelansky.
Yes. Okay, moving on to the minutes from our last meeting, November 27th, just a few weeks ago. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. McLean?
Kempner.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
And Kepelansky.
Yes. Okay, on to communications. You mentioned, Mr. McLean, the communication we got from Mr. Tyrell regarding the design guidelines ordinance. It's a little bit later in the agenda. There was nothing else, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So at this point then, we'll move on to citizen comments. Any citizens that have comments for items not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. We'll ask you to sign in on the sheet next to Mr. McLean, and as a reminder, the Planning Commission will not engage you in discussion. Please keep your comments to four minutes or less. I don't see anyone in the audience other than people here for items this evening, so I'm assuming we have no citizen comments. Moving on to our first order of business then. We have a special land use request for Michigan State Federal Credit Union at 3165 12 Mile. Mr. McLean, do you want to give us an overview of this one?
Yes, the applicant has provided a more detailed site plan. You see the site plan. You did receive hard copies of, it was a 24 by 36, showing the proposed signage as well as the proposed ATM. Just an item to note, as of Friday, the ATM that had previously been installed has been removed and the window is restored.
Okay, and we've already held the public hearing on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, does the applicant want to add anything before we begin our discussion? No? Okay, we'll have you stand by for questions. And there was one deficiency identified as part of the staff report. Is that correct, Mr. McLean?
Yes, with, with the proposed ATM, that would reduce the minimum window coverage that's required by ordinance. By ordinance, we require a minimum of 40 percent windows. The ATM would, would drop the window coverage to about, what was that? It was 37.6 percent.
And you identified a mechanism we can consider?
Yes, the Planning Commission is able to revise those requirements. And... Yes, they are able to revise requirements if the commission finds that the standards for approval as outlined in section 138-678 have been met. Because the applicant is intending to utilize the facility on a temporary basis, the Planning Commission could consider a condition that requires the applicant to remove the ATM and restore the window within a specific timeframe.
Okay. Who would like to start discussion on this? No? Marty?
Um... They've, they've removed, looking at the elevations here, we had three large glass panels and a door, all glass, but that's beside the point. So, and they're installing an ATM and they're a little bit under our minimum glass coverage. I would think that since it's a temporary situation, they're going to be there give or take a year. Is that still correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That if we were to approve this, we'd have a condition that they restore that glass panel as it was previously within X number of days. When you pulled out the ATM, did you put the glass panel back in?
Yes, sir.
So you've already done it a couple of times. Okay. So just save that glass panel. You'll be needing it, needing it again. So I don't know if any, I don't have any issues with this. I looked over the plans. The facade. I myself, like I said, don't have any issues. I would say we, when we make a motion, ask them to put it back in within, pick a date, 10 days. The glass panel, I'm sure they want their ATM someplace else anyway, so. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? I, I had one question. The lighting that you were proposing, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to switch to something more decorative? The two lights? Okay, I, I would point you maybe to, towards our downtown design guidelines that we have. I think they're in draft form still. But that might have some examples. Just something that, that might look a little bit more attractive. Okay?
I kind of liked the light fixture, but...
Did you?
But again, it's a temporary thing, but if, if the Plan Commission feels they want something decorative, I have no issue with that. Thank you.
We tried to, Brian Graebertine, MSU SEO.
Yeah.
We tried getting something that was slim, less noticeable, that would just provide the light and actually highlight the sign and not the fixture.
Yeah.
But by all means, if you'd like us to pick something different, we can...
Just maybe take a look at the design guidelines that we have and, and see if there's something that might work with the, the facade that's there.
We can do that.
Just a consideration, not necessarily a requirement.
We'll send something to Tim.
Great. Anyone else or a motion?
Well...
Mr. Richardson?
Madam Chair, I, I will make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission approve item number one, PSU 0218, a request for special land use by Michigan State Federal Credit Union on condition that the ATM is removed within 10 days of the applicant vacating the premises and the glass, the original glass that was there before the ATM be restored.
Second.
Okay, any other changes to the motion? No? Mr. McLean?
Patterson.
Discussion now that there's a motion on the floor?
Yeah, any changes, discussion?
Oh, I just have one comment. So I would like to see a more time definite on the removal because, like, if they don't move forward with the...
Didn't I say 10 days?
You said 10 days after they vacate.
Yeah.
So what happens if they don't end up building on Coolidge?
Well, they're not gonna, I'm not gonna require them to remove the ATM if they're still there.
They could be there for 10 years.
The, I, well, that's a, that's a can of worms that's far bigger than the ATM. Isn't it?
I don't know.
I don't think it's really...
Okay.
I posit myself.
Are you, would you be willing to have a time limit attached to how long the ATM could be there?
So currently, we have a one-year lease on the building.
Okay.
And that's hopefully gets us to the end of construction. If need be, we like to be able to then work out with the owner that we rent month by month if needed. But we really hope the if needed does not happen.
So if we were to say two years, that sounds like it would provide you plenty of cushion?
Oh, gosh, yes.
Do you guys want to do that?
I won't object. I don't really think it's necessary, but I won't object. I don't think it's inconsistent with my, the motion.
So maybe include that if there's no objection to including it, if the applicant doesn't have any objection?
If I could ask the, the amender, does she mean it has to be removed no matter what they do after two years?
Well, I, I think we're... I think with all of these decisions that are in the short term without the longer-term vision and standards that we've just established, particularly with, we have a downtown design guidelines and we're now, you know, giving them a variance from that with the glazing. I think that we have to be careful on how many incremental steps we take towards eroding away these standards that we're trying to build. Every little tiny decision we make has some impact. Okay, well, it's just for a short period of time, or it's just this one property. Pretty soon, we end up with a street full of inconsistencies that are now pretty static. And I'm, I, I, we've been working hard on these, the overlay, the design guidelines, all of the other stickler things, and it just seems like we are inconsistent with our application of those standards. And I'm not trying to be hard on Michigan State, but, or Michigan State Credit, Federal Credit Union, but it's like, look, we had a standard, they've already violated the, the one provision of our code, they undid it, thank God, and now they'll, you know, we'll go back, but we're giving them a variance, but it should not be forever.
Well, um...
Who knows, they could move, they could, they could go under, they could run out of money, I don't know. There's some projects that are half-done in our community that we thought would be well up and running by now that seem to not be moving forward at all.
You know, I, I appreciate your concerns. I, I, I appreciate those. I'm inclined to think that even if they were going to be there permanently, this body would be inclined to grant them a variance of 2% on their, their facade glass coverage. We routinely granted such variances. And it wouldn't bother me personally, but I'm not speaking for any other commissioner, obviously, but I, I will accept your amendment.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, with the special use, the next step would be final approval by city council. The city council meets next Monday, the 17th, which this item would be on the, the agenda for, for a final approval.
Good, okay. Does this, who was the secondor of that?
I think I was.
Do you accept the amendment then?
I will accept it, but I agree with Mr. Richardson about what he said earlier, but I have no issue with it. So we're saying we're still saying 10 days after vacating, two years maximum. Is that what we're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
However unlikely that may be, that's fine.
And just so the record's clear, this pertains to the ATM and the replacement of the glass, not, we're, we're not suggesting that they have to move out in two years.
Right.
Okay, okay. All right.
Any other comments? No? Mr. McLean?
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
And Kepelansky.
Yes. Okay, you're all set, so just follow up with Tim on whatever you need to submit for the city council meeting. I'm not sure if you need additional materials or anything like that. But you're all set for this evening.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, moving on to the next item then. We have the design overlay district for discussion. This is a zoning ordinance amendment. Mr. McLean, did you want to introduce them?
Yes, I have the correct version before you this time. Apologies for the confusion at the last meeting. Some of the changes that Director Carmody had made included the, the section for intent and purpose. There's also some language added to the design review process. We also, in discussions, talked about if the design overlay district were to be adopted, that it would necessitate revisions to the ordinance for site plan review as well, which I've also included some potential revisions to that ordinance as well. I believe Director Carmody is here this evening. If you have specific questions regarding the revised proposed overlay district.
Is there anything you wanted to add, Vivian?
No, you know, I think that this addresses all the questions and concerns that have been raised over the past several months. John Staran is comfortable with the language. I think it's a good, solid ordinance. And I'm eager to get it in place.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Richardson.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I I don't like it much when other commissioners do this, but I'm gonna do it myself. I've found one typo in my...
Good for you.
My text, it's, uh... It's on the second page, paragraph three. Two, three, fourth line down. Beginning insofar as possible, have an interest in designing the built environment and it relationship. I think that should be its.
That changes everything.
Uh, yeah. That, that's, it's a whole new ballgame now.
Send it back.
But on a more, slightly more substantive note, going down to paragraph five, it says, "A design review advisory board will meet monthly." I'm envisioning situations where there might not be any requests for several months, and I'm just wondering if this mandates a monthly meeting, even if there's nothing to discuss, or am I, am I misreading the, the situation there?
So we can definitely amend it, I suppose, or edit it to say meet monthly or as needed.
I mean...
I'm okay with that.
Okay. I don't know if there's a... I think as long as you provide with notice requirements, you're okay with adjourning a meeting, but that's kind of a hassle.
Sure.
Can I butt in on that?
Yeah.
Because we talked in the past about, I brought up, from the eyes of a developer. If this is a meet, a monthly meeting, it's another step. You know, it's another roadblock. That's how they would see it, of course. I thought we talked about meeting not on call, but meeting as necessary when things arrive. Did we talk about that a little bit?
I think it was brought up.
Okay, I brought it up.
Yeah.
So maybe there was no conclusion to that. I don't, by changing the language, meet monthly or as needed, that kind of sums it up. If someone comes in and staff looks at it and so on and so forth, it has to go through this process. Do they have, if they come in the day after the meeting, do they have to wait a whole month?
Well, I would hope that our communications would be strong enough so that if they're bringing in something, they would know when the meeting was and that they wouldn't miss it by a day. I mean, to me, then, that's just kind of a failing on their part and not our part.
Just ask.
Yeah.
Okay.
So would, would the design review advisory board meet, have special meetings if necessary then?
Well, they certainly could. I think like any board, it would be a matter of being able to pull together your board, you know, your experts who sit on that board. I, I don't see that... I mean, there may be something that comes in that's very urgent, that I don't see why anybody would be opposed to trying to meet. Obviously, you don't want to meet weekly because that just disrupts the system, and we obviously want to be well-run. Once a month works effectively in other communities. You know, once that meeting, those meeting dates are established and a developer or a property owner gets into the kind of the system, I mean, the sooner we can let them know, and I think just, you know, even with the public participation plan, as well as some of the other things that Tim is working on, we can make sure that they're aware of the meeting dates and how they should meet those dates. But if necessary, something's urgent, there's no reason that they couldn't meet. I just wouldn't want to set the precedence that we're now meeting based on, no offense, an architect's schedule rather than the architect or the builder trying to be expedient to work with ours.
Well, I guess my concern is if the ordinance requires a monthly meeting, and there's no reason for a monthly meeting, then you're kind of between a rock and a hard place, and you, you can, the city can formally adjourn it or something, but I mean, if you're doing that over and over again, it seems to me there might be a better way to word this so that...
Well, I, I guess I think that if it says it will be monthly or as needed, that kind of addresses everybody's concerns.
Yeah, I'm good with that, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly good with that.
But if I were coming in here, working for a client who's a big developer, I'd read that, and that, that's the other end of the spectrum, I'd read that or as needed, say, I need it. I need it next week. So I'm just, I'm just being a devil's advocate here on both ends of this. Do you have a schedule when your meetings will be? We meet, meet on the fourth Tuesday, usually.
Yeah, I mean, no, but I would think that we'd want to time it so that it would, you know, work effectively with when the Planning Commission meets.
So whatever is decided in...
So we would not be meeting on the, you know, the second Wednesday of every month. We would be trying to meet as early in the process after Planning Commission is possible so that, you know, everything can then move quickly and be...
Well, it fits into the Planning Commission's schedule.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Commissioner Buckler?
Do they have to be public notice, these meetings, like in a certain amount of time? Because they're bored, or do they have to have the 30-day notice, like?
Advisory committee.
It's a board.
I, I think that there is a requirement to post it in a public place, right? Isn't there a requirement to post the agenda? Like the tree board or the... Yeah.
If it was a public hearing, then, you know, you're talking, you know, a 15-day notice, but for, for open meetings, I believe it's 12 hours.
Okay.
Okay, so if it's on our...
So it's easy then.
So if it's on our city calendar?
Yeah.
Month, 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 like, like the tree board or whatever, that would be adequate.
Yeah, and if we had to have a, excuse me, a special meeting, you know, like I said, you could do 12 hours.
Okay.
And so because they're open, they can't do these remotely?
No.
Like people can't, like, call in and do a conference?
No, and I don't think we'd want that either.
Okay.
Okay, well, just moving on to other things that I noted. On... These pages aren't numbered, but there's a list of mandatory design site guidelines topics in section 549. Right at the end, item six, application by character area. I, I just don't really know quite what that is driving at.
So if you look at the design guidelines, they've, one of the things that we did early on with the consultant was to create those character districts, and within those districts, and in fact, the design guidelines talk about that. So within those districts, maybe you would allow for artsier signage than you might in another district. Because what they've looked at is the character of those districts. So we have like the gateway, 12 Mile Gateway District, you know, we have the Downtown Core, we have South Coolidge. You know, some of what might be allowed in the Central Retail District, Shopping District on 12 Mile, or something that might be allowed on West 12 Mile, may not be as as appropriate for, you know, that shopping district on 12. So the character districts actually speak to that. They talk about what's, what we're trying to achieve in each of those character districts and kind of, you know, where those design guidelines fit into those character districts.
I, I think I'd use the word appropriate rather than application. Appropriate, appropriate to character area, to me is clearer, but...
Okay, I just, you know, what this does is it actually pulls the chapter headings out of the design guidelines. That's why it says that. Because there had been concern about, you know, what are these covering? So what I did is I literally just took each section and what each section covers from the design guidelines, so that's why it says application by...
Okay, well, I...
So, I, I mean...
I'm the dummy in the room. You need to get, you need to make it clear to me. And then it'll fly, so I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with changing it if you want it. I, like I said, the reason it says what it is and the way that's all laid down is because, you know, it just picked up so that there's that, so that if anybody's wondering, they can, you know, they can just look at those design guidelines and say, oh, they're talking about this chapter application, my character district.
All right, well, that's a comment. You can take it for what it's worth. Next section, next page, and I think I know the answer to this, but you're talking about additions of a size equal to or greater than 25 percent of the square footage. I assume that's above-ground square footage, right? If, if a business like the Antique Place has a basement that they do business out of, does that count?
Yeah.
It does count?
Oh, no, no. That, that change was made based on a comment from the last that said, hey, instead of, you know, just use the term square footage because that's what we look at, instead of, I think we had gross, you know, volume or something before. So, I mean, we can, once again, if you want to say ground floor, square footage, I mean, you know, Oddfellows is a little bit different because they don't have a ground floor, so...
It's whatever you intend, you know. I just want, I'm just looking for clarity.
Yeah, I, truly, you know, I think this, these are decisions that you guys can finesse. If you wanted to say ground floor. I think this is where your input in making, you each are comfortable with the wording is, is important.
Okay, well, I'll just go to my last and then open it up.
Let me interrupt again, if I may, Ms. Jim.
Yes.
This shows up a couple of times in here, the 25 percent rule. We're gonna talk later on about our discussion about administrative review.
Right.
So I would think we'd want this language to be consistent with what we eventually come up with.
Yeah, I would agree. It should be consistent across all of our ordinances.
Okay.
Definitely.
Whatever that is.
Right.
Just one last thing, and then my colleagues, I'm sure, want to chime in. On the, on the last page, where it talks about updates and review by the development directors and the DDA director. I don't see any language here about... It, it says, "If the applicant is not satisfied, the applicant may take the application to the Planning Commission", which is fine. But I'm wondering if any actions by the, by, taken under the review process should be reported to us, like even an administrative review should at least be... We should be made aware of, of a decision made at that level to approve or deny.
So you still want it to come to planning?
No, I, I want to know what, what, what's been done.
That it happened, or...
Yeah.
Sure, I mean, I would.
No, I'm not suggesting changing the procedure. I'm just saying, give us a report.
I think that there is a point, a part in here where.
I thought it said only for the yearly report to city council.
Yeah, to report annually to city council regarding the effectiveness, but you want to actually know what projects are approved?
Well, I, I, I think it would be advisable since you're kind of.
So that might be a policy, that would probably be a, like a staff policy issue, right? That, because right now, I don't know, Tim, do you, if you're administratively approving things, is the planning commission
We don't.
Getting reports?
We don't get that typically, no, but this is a little bit different.
Don't we get an annual report of how many permits were issued and things like that?
Well, this goes into the item number three again. I think that's important that because of, I'll just say, Tootie in Tallulah's, that took us by surprise and some of us feel there's more than whatever the percentage was done to that building. I think it'd be a memo or something as part of our package that boom, this happened, whether it was approved or not, just so we're aware of these things.
Ms. Buckler, did you have something to add?
Yeah, so I guess, so the question is, if it, without the overlay district, without the design guidelines, if the project doesn't warrant a planning commission agenda item, because it's either an administrative review or it's something, what's the mechanism by which they, if they get denied at the design advisory, or the, you know, the advisory board, it says they can take it to the planning commission? It's, it's still like, you, you can't just go to Tim and say like, I want a site plan review even though it like either falls under administrative. I mean, we, we, I, I just think this is kind of uncharted territory or areas we didn't contemplate in the way the ordinance is written. So I'm just trying to make sure that all the gears, when they're spinning, that we don't skip something. So like if it wasn't going to come to us anyways.
Right.
Then now we're in a kind of a lawsuit situation because if it, if you deny them, they force it to come to us and we say, well, we don't like it either, but they didn't need a site plan anyways, where are we? Like, are we, are we opening ourselves up for some kind of litigation?
You're saying they wouldn't have needed site plan approval from us?
There are certain situations where if the facade changes, is, falls within the administrative guidelines, but if it falls in the district, it's going to have to go to the design review board regardless, correct? Anything they're going to do or?
Well, no, because some of it's approved administratively. So it doesn't all go to the design review board.
A new onny.
That would never, that would be administratively approved, just as it is now.
Wouldn't go to the design review board.
What happens if it violates the design review guidelines?
Well, then it would be denied.
By whom?
Well, so we would.
So he's going to be an agent of the design review board?
But isn't, but what we, that what it is is being an agent of this ordinance, which is what Tim does.
This is what Mr. Tyrell's talking about, kind of that we've now created this new, and I'm not, I'm not trying to make trouble. I'm just trying to figure out the process, whereas if I'm an owner and I go to do something, I now have, like, I thought of the advisory board as, these are great guidelines, this is what we kind of want to see, but if I'm still the building owner and I don't want to do it, it seems like we've now created a new governmental layer for them, which is what some of the concerns are.
You're saying the design review board is advisory in nature for any site plans that would come to us, but not advisory in nature for administrative review? Is that what you're getting at?
But that, but what I'm just hearing now, and of course, I could be, it's, you know, it's, it's Christmas season, so I'm a little foggy. But it's saying that Tim or our, 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 our city administration will function in that role of, of applying those design guidelines.
So here's, I guess, how I'm seeing it.
They have, they have no, they have no safe harbor.
So the design review board advisory, when there's a site plan that needs to come before us, right, they give us some input and then we make a decision.
Sure.
If it's an administrative review, then how I'm reading it is in, in, for right now, Tim and Vivian would review it and act as the design review board and give a yes or no. If the applicant thought that their no was not justified, then they could appeal to us.
Right, we wouldn't normally see that under, and we wouldn't normally ever see it in that sense because it would be administrative. I, I just, I'm just, I'm, I know I'm going down some rabbit holes here, but I feel like.
It's a separate process.
May I step in and, and I think if under normal administrative review, if the applicant is denied, the applicant can come before us, is that right?
That is correct. With administrative approval, the the current language says the planner slash community development director and the building official act as the planning commission for admin review. If the applicant is, is not satisfied with the outcome of that review, they have the option to take that site plan to the planning commission.
So I don't think it's changing the process from what it is now.
No, it's, it's not, except that your, your review board is advisory and, and the.
So in this instance.
And the, the ultimate decision is made at the administrative level if, if it was an administrative matter to begin with, or our level if it was at our level to begin with. I think that's how it's going to work out. Because your board doesn't have the authority to deny.
And the board wouldn't see it as administrative approval anyway. Yeah. Ms. Kepner, did you have something to add?
I have, I have a question, I guess. So as it stands right now, if somebody were to add on to their building, any, any addition, would it come before us as a site plan?
Yes.
Okay, so we're expanding the administrative approval role to probably take care of almost most things that happen in the downtown.
Because of the twenty-five percent you were going to?
Because it says pretty much any updates and then additions up to twenty-five percent.
I, I think that we would still be following the administrative review and approval procedures for site plans, but perhaps in instances where the addition is less than twenty-five percent, our input on whether or not it corresponds with the design guidelines would be from Vivian and Tim as opposed to the design review board.
So it would still come to us?
But that's why it becomes a part of the site plan review process, so.
It would follow the typical procedure, but instead of going to the board, they would act as the board in those instances and give us their recommendation.
Okay, because that, it does. I'm not sure that that's how this, that that's clear in the reading of it. In the reading of it, it sounds like you're, it's only coming to planning commission if it's denied and otherwise they, they get their approval.
Mr. McLean, I have another question along these lines. Currently, when you deny somebody at the administrative level and they do have this right to come to us. I mean, is your denial, right now, is that considered just advisory because you're, you're basically acting as our agent and we retain the legal authority to make the decision in all cases? I am kind of asking you a question that's a little bit beyond your field, but.
Well, in my one year on the job, we have yet to have a, you know, situation where, you know, we've denied any admin approval and honestly, you know, we don't get many of them.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think we have too many here either.
There's always a recourse for appeal though, right? Even if.
Yes.
So, any, any, you could look at any decision then as quote-unquote advisory, whether they appeal to a circuit court or appeal to us.
That's what I'm driving at. So I think this doesn't really change things, but I'd like to, I'd like to know what's going on at the administrative level. I'd like a report included in the month, in the monthly report.
So is that something that you, you think needs to be in here or that's a policy thing where you're just asking Tim to keep you updated on a monthly basis as to what comes through?
I, I don't think we need it in the ordinance necessarily.
Yeah, because it's easy to just shoot off in a list of, hey, this is what we saw.
We get a page in our, in our packet every month.
Yeah.
If something happened.
Absolutely.
I think that's, that's very reasonable.
Okay, so I think, that's all I had. Please, please change that.
It?
Do not, if you ignore everything else I said. Change that, please.
Yes, Mr. Tyrell.
That's all I had.
It says that, it's specifically for buildings that are under twenty-five percent, but it does state that they're supposed to be approval or denial by this, by the authority. I thought that they weren't supposed to have any ability to approve or deny anything unless it's done through the administration or by us.
Which, which part, portion?
Under item number two in the red, it says, existing building design review applicants will be reviewed within ten business days by the community development director, which obviously is Tim, and the downtown development authority, after which the applicant will be issued an approval or denial. I mean, the question is, is should the downtown development director be the one reviewing it or should it be one person? I mean, now you have two people reviewing it.
So maybe that should be a recommendation for approval or denial with the ultimate authority for approval or denial line with the body that approves it, which might be in this case, the community development director, but.
It could be, yes. I'm just concerned because you have two different people approving it then or denying it.
So you're on the section one thirty-eight, five-five-two, paragraph two?
Yeah, paragraph two. It gives two people the ability to approve or deny something. And now you're talking to people that are probably maybe two different areas that could approve something or deny it and what's keeping track or record of any of it.
Well, and I think you make a good point that the design review board, whether it be the two of you or the whole board that's put together, is making a recommendation either way.
Right.
So maybe that, that should be recommend approval or denial?
That's, I mean, my thing is, looking at Chuck's comments here, he doesn't want the ability for them to pass bypass zoning or the planning commission and this is an avenue for them possibly too. It should be a recommendation only. It shouldn't be an approval or denial.
Okay, so I, back to the word administratively, so this would not come before us, this in section one thirty-eight, five-two?
Right, this is, this is administratively approved.
So who are they making recommendations to? She's going to make a recommendation to Tim and Tim's going to.
Decide to approve or deny.
Right, and then they'll get appealed if they don't like the answer to us.
And this was added specifically because in one of the previous planning commission meetings, somebody said you need to say what happens next. Is it approved or denied? And so we added that in there.
But remember, we didn't see this last month, so, yeah, you know, we got it last week and now we have a chance to, we, we don't have a dialogue outside of this room. So I can read this and I think I have it and then I read another word and I get somebody else's interpretation. So that's, we're just working through it so that we're clear because it is a big step for the community and it, it's going to take some understanding of how the, you know, it all works out. If it all work out beautifully, it could crash and burn. I don't know. I'm hoping it's the former, not the latter, but.
Do, do know that this isn't something that we've, we're just making up. The process does work in other cities, so, you know, there is a history.
And we can always amend this, if things need to be tweaked.
Yeah, if it's not working.
Yeah.
Okay, so I need to clarify it, guys, because then I think I got confused and now I'm back. So if it is an update or an addition to an existing building that's less than twenty-five percent, it does not come to the planning commission?
Correct.
For the design.
It doesn't go to the design review board. It's administratively approved.
And then you guys are recommending to us?
Correct.
No.
If it's an.
So we never see it?
Just like you don't see certain administrative approvals now, you know, and the thing is that.
See it if we're denied and the person wanted to bring it up.
So let me, let me jump in for a second. What's the threshold for administrative approval right now of just a site plan?
Yep, if you're changing the surface materials, more than fifty percent.
The surface materials of the facade?
Yes.
Okay, so if they're changing the surface materials of the facade sixty percent, they're not changing the gross square footage of the building, and I'm assuming the way that this works is that you two would look at what they're changing, make a recommendation to us as the planning commission and we would make a decision. Is that correct?
Yes, and I, I think perhaps it needs to be spelled out a little more clearly. I, I certainly don't want to be administratively approving additions to a building. That's what U nine are for.
That would have come to us anyway, so that should have gone to the board first. Like, if it was administrative, it should go to administrative. If it was going to us anyways, then it would go to the board. Isn't that, I mean, it should be consistent with whatever triggers the review.
I, I think that there, I think, I guess that it's, it's not consistent then.
Okay, so we have to have that the applicant, this should be kind of a.
So you're saying design review board, the actual board is, and planning commission are a package deal?
I'm guessing that that's, that's the way it probably should be.
That's the way I, I understand it to be.
Okay, so that's the way it's going to be. We have to make sure that we back out into that language, that it's very clear because if.
I agree.
You know, if I go, if, if, if I go do it and it checks the box that I'm administrative, then there's an administrative path and then there's always an appeal that it can come to us, which is the, whatever that language was at the end of one thirty-eight, five-twenty-two-two. If I go and I do some, you know, it, it checks the box that I have to go to planning commission through site plan review, then it should go to the full board, the advisory board, with its recommendations that come to us. We do our normal site plan review. We take those recommendations into consideration and we wait them with the difference that they deserve and we make our decision. But there's, there should never be a point where it's like, oh, well, that was administrative, but it was, or, you know, or this was going to go for site plan, but it didn't go to the board and, or it was administrative, but it ended up going to the board. It should be the same set of standards. So that's where I got confused. Because I felt like there was some gaps or crossovers.
I, I don't think it's written like that now, so.
Well, okay, because that's the way I envision this.
So maybe we just need to make sure that things like facade changes are matching up with administrative types of approvals. Mr. Kepner?
Could, could we do like, maybe add, like you just said, the flow chart or the pathways of how this, like we did with the public participation, because that spelled it out very clear.
Yeah.
Anybody could pick it up and see exactly what's happening. I think that would clarify a lot of.
We talked about adding, I think.
We talked about adding this to the flow charts.
No, I'm saying make a flow chart.
I have one here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm an applicant, what do I do?
Well. Well, that's what the communications thing was all about. Those are the flow charts. This backs up the flow charts.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So does, does that make sense to make sure the administrative review procedures and this match up in terms of terminology and all those things?
Yeah, I do think, and Tim can speak to this, but one of the things that as we become a redevelopment-ready community is that they do want to see administrative approval expanded, which I think this does nicely. So I don't know if you want to change this, I, I don't know.
I think the comment is just that no matter how the administrative approval is set up, they have to match up.
Okay.
And, and we know those documents, so I mean, we, we expanded it a bit, I think, last year or earlier this year, the site plan approval, administrative review portion of it. And I know there's, I think some, isn't there something on our agenda for today?
Yes.
So I I think the tension here is created because these ordinances are old and they're a little bit hacked and chopped together and, you know, restitched and whatnot and they don't they don't exhaustively catalog every situation. So it's hard to write something new and innovative and bolt it on to.
Something that's obsolete.
Yeah, this is like, you know, a new knee and a, you know, a hundred-year-old person. I mean, it's, it's, so it's great. It all works, but, you know, all the other systems around it are, are kind of failing. So we, we need to kind of think about it holistically and that I don't mean to, you know, throw wrenches in it, but it also makes us elevate our efforts and making sure that our base level ordinances all work with this because, you know, and then we have, of course, redevelopment. There's all these layers and layers and layers and of course, the public has talked about this or the residents have talked about this and so it, it, it becomes very complicated because there, you know, we'll get all sorts of correspondence where if somebody will dig into one little ordinance and there's one little phrase in there that upset the apple.
Well, to me, the, I, I know Mr. Sterren looked at this, but we, we have to make sure that the new process we're setting up does not conflict with law.
Oh, a hundred percent.
And we, we have the legal right to delegate certain items for administrative review. And we don't, as far as I know, have the legal right to delegate government decision-making functions to this board. So any language in here that might suggest the contrary needs to be straightened out and I agree that the flow charts, we need a flow chart perhaps for ourselves to, it should be, it should be very clear at the end of the day, what, what the legal fate of every single request is, you know, whether it, it, it ends with administrative review or it ends here. You know, I think, I think we. You know, I think, I think we just need to double-check the language to make sure that that's very clear in there.
My worry is, or, yeah, I guess my worry is that when you take all updates and additions that are less than 25 percent, and moving that to administrative review, you've pretty much taken the vast majority of the downtown and put it all into administrative review. And I think administrative reviews are good when it's very minor things that are kind of no brainers, but when we're looking at things that call for judgment calls, they should come in front of us. We, we're not a huge city. There's not a huge amount of property that we oversee. And I, I think maybe you've made this a little too big for the administrative review.
All right, that was done purposely, looking forward to what redevelopment-ready communities is requiring of us. So, but that's, if you guys wanna take out that 25 percent, you can just, it doesn't have to be in there.
Yeah, we'll talk about that as the next item, but I think just the general comment is that it has to match with whatever the administrative review policy is for the city.
Sure.
I have a couple more comments. Um, all right, if we go back to the beginning, the intent and purpose, as I read through it, it, it talks about the overlay district, but it doesn't really mesh the overlay district with the design guidelines. It just keeps talking about an overlay district. We don't have a set of codes that you can look up overlay district on. So I feel like somewhere in there, we have to somehow mesh that what we're talking about is the downtown design guidelines. Because then you, it, then it just kind of like is shoved in, you know, later on.
Are we, are we putting the overlay district on the zoning map?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe that's the reference that could be put in there.
Yeah, I mean, just something so that people know what, what, what we're looking for. And...
Is that something that we could actually just put into the title, where it says downtown design overlay district dash design guidelines? Or do you want it actually into the language of the...
If you, what if you were to add, after accordingly, this article provides for a design overlay district as depicted on the zoning map? Would that clarify things?
Wait, say that again.
Um, if you just added after here, provides for a design overlay district, and then added as depicted on the zoning map? Is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, my worry is that, like, when we go further down, and it talks about the additional provisions, requirements, and restrictions of the overlay district, and we talk about the overlay district, but, or, or maybe a definition of, you know, what we mean by this is the design guidelines, because it doesn't actually mesh those two things together. You just kind of figure it out as you're reading the rest of the code, and it refers to the design guidelines.
So, yeah, we can add that into that intent.
Just somewhere to make it like more clear.
For sure.
What is the process for changing the guidelines? I mean, that was supposed to be kind of a somewhat fluid, you know, unchangeable. We didn't wanna set it as a code, right, because in case you wanted to change it. What would you have to do to change it?
I don't, I, well, you would maybe do an update in eight or 10 years, but you wouldn't be trying to change them on an annual basis.
But it would still have to go to, like, planning commission and city council. I mean, the DDA as a board couldn't just decide to change that, right? It would have to go through all the channels.
No, just, e, e, even now, I mean, those, those design guidelines are approved by the, the council.
Okay. So, and I'm, the only thing, reason why I'm asking is because it's now embedded into here, so there has to be a very...
So that makes those design guidelines a part of your, your code. So that's nothing, I mean, the DDA couldn't go in and just decide, oh, we're gonna change this paragraph.
Um, and then when we go under renovating a property, which is, I don't know, the fourth page? Cool concept, but renovating a property isn't going in front of the board, right?
It depends on what they're doing.
Yeah, it depends on the scope of the project.
But, and...
So for instance, if we have a building owner who's gonna put a second store, a floor on their building, that would, that would come here. That's a building renovation. I mean, internal renovations obviously don't, because it's all internal.
Okay, but adding on, all right. Um, and then on the next page, when we talk about the application, it has site plan elevations and signage. I'm thinking you probably would like to add in there facade details, like the color and type, lighting. I don't know if landscaping's super appropriate, but I, I wanna make sure that you guys are getting all of the information you really need.
So this, would the site plan not include all of that?
I mean, our site plan, our site plan ordinance kind of like specifies all of these different things. So it says, you know, a site plan, an elevation, signage, facade. It has like 18 different things that they want.
Okay, but these are, this is, this is actually on the front end of that, I think. I don't know if they have to, if they have to have, like, site surveys and all that other stuff.
Well, no, but you would want your, your facade details and your lighting, probably.
Well, so that would be part of your site plan review process, where they would have to bring all that, because this, this comes to, this is, if you're looking at all new construction will be reviewed, and so these are the things you need to see. That's part of your site plan review process anyway.
Well, and that was gonna lead me to my next point, because I think, like, so the wording of that gets a little confusing. So my thought was that this part is, the site plan elevations and signage is just going to you as part of the bigger site plan, but I think someone not familiar with our codes would start to get confused as to what they have to have. If what you want is what they have to give us anyways, then maybe just reference...
Just add them all in.
Or say, you know, a detailed site plan as, you know, I can't, I don't have the number off my head, as listed in whatever ordinance number is.
Okay.
I think that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Other comments, questions?
Are we gonna come back to the 25 percent thing, item?
So I think our next thing that we were gonna talk about was administrative review, and what can and cannot be approved administratively. So if everyone's comfortable with just leaving this as it should match whatever we determine for the administrative review.
Yeah.
So I guess we can revisit the 25 percent as part of the administrative review.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Did you, do you wanna look at the, the edits that Tim has made to your site plan review process that coincides then with this?
Yeah, that's...
And I'll let Tim talk about that.
Anything to add, Tim?
Yes, um, proposed language would be added to the site plan review ordinance that addresses development that falls within the overlay district would be reviewed by the advisory board. You know, for all new construction, including additions that are equal to or greater than 25 percent, which something we'll have to revisit. Also, under administrative review, item number three was added for facade alterations that fall within the overlay district but do not exceed a 25 percent increase in the square footage of the existing building as referenced. So that's added. There was a revision made, talks about during administrative review, the building official, and it currently says planner, which we've, we would change that to community development director would act as planning commission. And then what, what the next step is if the building official and community development director don't agree, they would go to the, to the commission.
So I would assume, depending on what we talk about in our next discussion item, that the 25 percent may or may not change. But otherwise, you're basically just referencing the new ordinance sections that would be added.
Correct.
Questions or comments on this? Mr. Richardson?
I, building and planning professionals may be very comfortable with merely saying 25 percent. I'm, I'm not sure. I'd like kind of a def, more of a definition of what the 25 percent is. Some of the businesses we have do have basement operations. The antique, yeah, and the Oddfellows Building has that, so, and I, I don't have a strong position as to whether it's, you know, how you actually would define that 25 percent. I don't, I don't have a terribly strong opinion on that, but I, I would want clarity on it, so that we know what our baseline is.
Yep, and I agree, and I think as part of the next discussion, we can kind of get into some of those issues a little bit further.
I thought we were into the next, aren't we into it yet?
This is kind of like a bridge.
Okay.
Segue.
Okay.
Um, this is just, I, I think we're trying to wrap up the design guidelines and just making sure that we're good with this section of the ordinance referencing the design overlay district. Does, if everyone's ready to move on, unless there's any other comments on the design overlay district? No? Okay, then we'll just move into that topic.
Right. Sorry to jump the gun.
No, that's all right. It works fine. So, um, I think it was Commissioner Smith at the last meeting brought up some comments on administrative review and what can and cannot be approved administratively, and that perhaps we should take a look at that section of the ordinance again. In light of the timetable that we're wanting to keep this design overlay district moving, it would be great if we could come to some sort of consensus about how we wanna approach administrative reviews. I would assume the design overlay district we would like to have for a public hearing in January. So if we can come to some sort of consensus on the administrative reviews, I think that's necessary in order to move forward with the design overlay district. Did you have anything you wanted to introduce or add for, before we begin discussion on this item?
Nope. For the packet, I've included the section on administrative review. It's very brief and obviously open to discussion and potential revisions as the planning commission sees fit.
Okay.
I guess, I, if I may, I brought this up, I did bring this up last month, and it's just, in the context of, and I'm not picking on Tudi and Tallulahs. It turned out fine.
It looks great, yeah.
But here's a building that we say 50 percent of the facade. Now, I think I was the only one here when we wrote that, when we revised it to that, or it may have been there already. The thought was these eight or 10 facades in a strip in a block, 50 percent of that 20 feet or 40 feet. Well, you have Tudi and Tallulahs, or what used to be the Radiator Shop. We have three exposed sides.
Yeah.
And also, thinking back of that strip, if you look at some of these blocks, we have a front facade and a rear facade, which is just as important as the front. So I just found it interesting that the Tudi and Tallulahs, again, I'm not picking on them, did not fire off a site plan approval, but this ATM in this 20-foot wide space did for the Michigan Credit Union. It seems kind of silly.
So, Tim, do you wanna give us some background on the Tudi and Tallulahs?
Yes. The work that was done at Tudi and Tallulahs, 2600 12-mile road, was, there was a new entry door. The previous awning was removed, and they did add a new iron, new awning. They removed an existing box sign, and they painted the existing masonry. That was the, the extent of the work that was done at Tudi and Tallulahs.
Because in the past, they painted the entire building, right?
The existing masonry, yes.
Right, because in the past, that's more than 50 percent. If someone painted, that was the spirit of the ordinance.
The paint, painting was looked at as a change in the surface material.
Yeah.
So you're not...
And I'm not saying anybody did anything wrong. I'm just saying, that should've, I would think that should've kicked, kicked it off.
So you, you were here when it went from, that was a pharmacy before it became the quilt show, because the quilt shop was in that little brick building further down.
Right.
And then the guild crafters moved.
Mm-hmm.
So that was probably 2000...
2000 something.
Seven, something around in there. 2008, maybe? I don't know. Do, and I remember that they changed...
You should go up to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. It changed, I talk really loud. It changed, did we do a site plan, did you do a site plan approval when it went from the pharmacy to the guild crafters?
It was a very contentious site plan approval because of the materials that the applicant wanted to put on the facade.
It was not as nice-looking.
No, it's one time an applicant cried. One of two.
Okay.
Okay, so personally, no, go ahead. Did you have something to finish up?
I think, I think it does look better now, but the point is that it seemed to have been exempt from our process.
Well, yeah, I know, I made that, I made that comparison with the Michigan State Credit Union. It just seems kind of ironic that that little ATM that's this big in a 20-foot space kicked off a full-blown site plan, but the three sides of this building, something happening, 100 percent of the three sides did not.
So I think it's, it could be an interpretation whether or not painting changes the surface. Personally, I lean more towards administrative approvals than having things brought before here, but if the board in general leans towards having more items brought before us, then maybe it should read, do not change the appearance of surface materials, or something to indicate it's not just the material itself, but...
Materials, paint.
Yeah.
Yeah, paint is a change in the material.
But it was paint previously, yes?
But a color change.
I mean, they could've painted it...
Material was paint.
Right.
Bright pink if they wanted to, and nobody...
So if you go from paint to paint, it's not necessarily a change, but I see what you're saying.
Well, it is. I, I, for one, always ask applicants, what are your colors?
Yeah, right, it could've ended up bright orange.
Right. And not that Tim didn't, you know, and that it wasn't, and that's fine. So, and then looking at, you know, we don't know, the old transmission shop, that's another building. It's exposed on three sides. Not quite as prominent as across the street. So it just seems to me that we wanna, we wanna get a little more descriptive here with what, what, what we wanna do. And then, as I said earlier, a lot of buildings, and we didn't even think of this, have a front and a back that are both exposed.
So if the planning commission's inclined to do that, then perhaps it's change the appearance or color of the surface material of the entire building more than 50 percent? If, if we're inclined to move in that direction?
Well, in other words, if you're only painting 45 percent of your building, it's administrative. If you're painting 55 percent, it's...
There has to be a cutoff somewhere, right?
We have to draw a line.
Yeah, but I...
Put a number in there. See, I don't like doing, I mean, nobody here wants to see 10 things happening every month, you know, going through all this. There's a place for administrative approval, but the, the physical image of our downtown, of our whole town, all of our town, other than single family, that's our job. And, and I don't know what that number is, but when I see a couple of projects that, you know, thinking of the dimensions of the Tudi and Tallulahs, you know, 80 percent of that building changed. It may be a paint color, but 80-something percent of it changed, and the backside has some value too, even though it's on an alley.
It does.
Um, it changed, and that, to me, we, it should come to us.
So would you be inclined to add something that indicates color or appearance of the surface material of the entire building by more than 50 percent?
Well, it depends on what your definition of facade alterations is, and that's what you're asking me.
I'm trying to define it a little bit more clearly.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I interject?
Depends on the definition of facade.
Can I interject something?
That's true as well. Do we have a definition of facade?
Wait, say that again?
Depends on what the definition of facade is as well.
Do we have a definition, the ordinance of facade, Tim?
I don't have my...
We do, I will...
I do?
I'm looking.
Okay, grab it. I didn't bring mine tonight.
My question is, um, are we moving in a direction which is going to give us a problem qualifying for the, yeah, the, the, what's the acronym stand for again? I'm sorry.
Redevelopment ready.
Free communities.
Yeah. Are, are, are we, is there going to be a problem there?
So in my experience, RRC is looking for communities to move more towards administrative approvals. I mean, the whole idea is to be more business-friendly. That's their, that's their setup, right? I think if we were to keep it at the 50 percent and not in, make it so that more items are coming before us, I think by clarifying the definition, I don't think that they would be moving in a direction that would disqualify us.
How about if, like, exposed facades?
That's fair.
Then we don't care what a facade is by definition.
Yeah.
But say certain buildings have two, three, or four surfaces exposed.
Yeah, that's fair.
I have one question about this. What about the intent of the building changing, though?
What do you mean?
For example, the transmission shop. If you were to take that, the amount of parking required for the transmission shop in relationship to what's happening with the new salon. I mean, there's nothing in here that addresses any of that. What happens if they put in a nightclub in there? I mean, that's... I mean, there's nothing in here that addresses any of that. What happens if they put in a nightclub in there? I mean, that's completely, you're going to have 10 times as much parking.
Well, they would have to meet the standards of the parking ordinance, and if they couldn't meet the standards, then they'd be going to the ZBA on parking and was rejected.
Oh.
I, I'd like to go back to the, the paint color. I, I think paint to paint is not a facade change. I think an owner should be able to paint their building-
I don't agree.
And fresh, well, what if it's the same color?
Well, it's different, but you're changing, we talked to exposed facade alterations. Now, it could be white and they paint it green or paint it blue.
What if they go to light brown to dark brown or something like, I mean-
Well, see, that's what I don't know. That's why I'm bringing this up. That's why I want, I want us to talk.
Like, that seems like, that seems like an expensive, expensive proposition for an owner who wants to just freshen up the paint in his building. Or maybe he had a logo change, or, you know, you know, and he wants the colors to match, and he's already, now he has to come spend, I don't know how many hundreds of dollars on a site plan review for paint.
Yeah, I, I agree, Marty, that it is our job, but, but when we have administrative review, what we're saying is that we're delegating our authority to a level that we trust will make the right decision. You know, I think we have to take that into consideration. I mean, our administrative level isn't likely to approve a flaming pink with polka dot facade.
You bring up a good point, because I guess, I guess if we put this, these design guidelines into place, if someone's painting diagonal stripes on their building, they'll determine that. And it could be, it could be administratively done if they feel, I, I, I'm just bringing it up because it's not well-defined.
I think it's fair. It needs to be clarified.
So is the problem just paint to paint, or is it that it, like, it had a whole new look? It was paint to paint, it was new signs, it, it was like a refreshed building, not just like, we put a new coat of paint on it?
Well, that's what I'm getting at. Let's take the, let's take, for example, the, um, the Transmission Shop. Now, what's that turning into?
A salon.
Chemistry salon.
Okay. Well, there's a little different use there. They both involve a lot of chemicals, but, um, till we get into contaminated soils and stuff, what?
Yeah, they're all organic.
Okay, okay, just speaking from the past. There's obviously going to be some changes made to the three sides of that building. Significant changes. Maybe it's only color. I just want us to have this discussion and decide what the parameters are. I think if we say 50 percent of the exposed facades, that goes a long way.
I think that's fine, but I think you need to clarify too, appearance and color of the surface material, if that's what we want to do.
If they're changing materials, that's fine. You know, that, that one thing.
And can I suggest that, that maybe, if, if we're saying 50 percent, and this is just to throw out for your discussion, if more than 50, so take, for instance, some girls who painted their facade white, and it's a tiny little building, but they did 100 percent. So would that mean then that she'd have to come to Planning Commission because it's over 50 percent? So that to me starts to become a burden on a small business owner who's trying to open, and now they do have to wait an additional month because Planning Commission has to see it, because you're painting the entire 40 square feet of this small building.
And I think that's what Commissioner Buckler was getting at, right?
Yeah, I don't, I, it's not the first time Marty and I have disagreed or will disagree. I don't think that paint, I, you're right, there could be some objectionable paint out there. But, you know, I, as a, as a building owner, I should have some, some control over-
Absolutely.
The building I own and, and my use of it, but I think freshing up paint, putting a mural, because what about murals? Like, should we have gotten permits? Or should they have gotten a site plan review for the murals?
The murals are, have, mural, the, the mural program has been adopted by the console, and as long as they apply for murals through the DDA's mural program, then the DDA has the authority to approve those, and the console adopted that.
Understand, but does that, but there's still, it would still trigger site plan ordinance. I'm not sure at what point.
You're saying if we were to look at it as a change in paint color?
Sure, sure. It's on the side of a building, and a side of a building's been painted a mural, and the side of the building is 50 percent of the facade possibly?
Well, I don't, I don't think Ms. Buckler and I disagree. Um, I'm, like I said, I'll repeat. I want to, I want to have this conversation. And I will concede paint. I, I don't have an issue. And maybe the answer is the exposed facade material alterations.
I think it's if you're changing siding, if you're changing,
Yeah.
you know, the framing of the windows, the signage, the door location.
Yeah, and that may be the answer.
You know, you're adding the lower, you're adding EPIS, your favorite.
Not my favorite.
Design guidelines won't allow that.
I, I would, I would agree. The, what did you just say, Marty? The exposed-
Number one, exposed facade material alterations do not change on the surface material more than 50 percent.
I would be comfortable with that change.
I, I would be very comfortable with that.
And that would not include a change in paint color?
No.
I'm okay with that. Change in a material.
Material changes.
Material.
I think, yeah, and glazing. I mean, if they're going to pull out windows and stuff like that.
Well, that's material, right.
And there's that number two that talks about windows too, so.
And are we sticking at 50 percent?
I don't have a problem with 50 percent of the exposed surfaces.
Is everyone else good with 50 percent?
Well, even, should there be a consideration given to the size of the facade? I, it was, it was pointed out that Some Girls store is a very small store that made 100 percent change.
That was painted, right.
And, and, well, we're not saying 50 percent paint now, at all?
No, I said 50 percent material alterations.
My, my bad, sorry.
I have one question. Go ahead, Mr. Buckler.
So, for clarity, um, so that this conversation doesn't happen in seven years, because we're like, well, what exactly does the, you know, material changes mean? Does that mean paint? Should we specify things like, you know, this includes windows, signage?
It does to an extent already.
Yeah, when you say material changes, you're, you're implying a material change, not necessarily color change. You know, if someone came back and we had brick and they want to put, stating a past example, vinyl siding, no. You know, I-
I think it's, I think it should be able to be clear to an architect, but-
We can always define what a material, what a material change is. It's a change of the materials on a facade.
And it's not paint. We can just say-
Well, no, the change of the material type on a facade, maybe you were-
There we go.
Type of material.
Type of material, yeah.
Change in the, well, right now it says facade alterations that include any change in the exterior surface material. Or changes in the size or number of windows. That should also include doors.
Yeah.
And I'm checking. I think we need to specify, because the way I read this now is the same way we're changing it too. It talks about a facade alterations do not change the surface material more than 50 percent. Paint is the material.
Well, you can just have a, you can just have a disclaimer, surface material shall not include-
I think we need to specify, is what I'm saying. Absolutely.
No. I could read it both, I would read this both ways, either way. It needs to be rewritten. The point is you, you revise the material on a building. Does revising it mean color? Okay, maybe, other than color. I don't know.
Some kind of specificity.
So can you maybe throw, see what other communities have and try to put something together?
Now, that's one issue. The other issue is the 25 percent.
Are, we, are we good with the number two? The number or size of the windows are increasing in size. Is everyone good with that one?
What if they're decreasing in size?
What about window, or decreasing, exactly?
What if somebody wanted to cover their window up?
Well, if they're decreasing, they have to meet the standard. If not, if they don't meet the standard, I guess they could appeal to us for a modification of that standard.
That's, that's why the credit union, it came back, because they were, with the ATM, they would have been reducing the size of the windows, so that triggers full site plan review with the commission.
So that's already in the ordinance?
Right.
And I think more windows better, right, so?
Oh, I agree.
Sometimes, most of the time.
Okay, so generally, everyone's good with number two then? Yeah.
Well, do we include doors in there?
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Windows and doors, that's fine.
I think doors, yeah.
So that brings us to the big 25 percent question.
25 percent is a big chunk of real estate.
So when we say 25 percent, I guess, what, what's our starting point? Are we talking about 25 percent of the gross square footage of the building, 25 percent of the usable floor area, 25 percent-
Of the footprint?
Right, sir. Before we talk about the percentage, let's agree on what we're basing it on.
So, the last time, the first version where we had 25 percent actually was gross square footage, and then somebody requested that maybe it become, because we speak in terms of just floor space, you know, ground floor square footage, that we take away the gross and just put that in. So that's how that got there.
But you could have a five-story building and add 5 percent to all five stories. Right? I mean, you could add-
But you'd still-
5 percent.
Well, that's why we need to define it.
So maybe it goes back to being gross. So gross square footage is, is our starting point. That's what we started with, right? Right, so.
So what if you have a case where you have a, a, a site, um, and it's, you know, 25 percent gross square footage, but, but it's the footprint, you know, maybe it's a three-story building, they add, let's make it easy, a four-story building, and they only want to add on the first floor. They increase the footprint immensely, and that affects the site a lot.
Yeah.
But the upper floors, they leave the same. I'm only adding 25 percent. This is how us architects think, by the way.
That's a fair point.
I'm only adding 25 percent, but, you know, I doubled the size of my footprint, so, you know, that's why I bring this up.
That's, yeah.
Well, that's why then, I think that was the reason for going to like the first, the square footage of the first floor. Or ground floor, whatever you want to call it.
Well, maybe it's gross or footprint.
So 25 percent of the building footprint, so if they were adding a second floor, it would still trigger.
Right, still a big addition on a decent-sized building. I mean, I, I think that's-
Do we want to create like a maximum square footage or minimum to cut off at where they can say, let's say it's like 5,000 square feet, 25 percent or up to 5,000 square feet? Because think about, you have the Dallin Toy Soldier Shop, and they want to add on 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, 5,000 square feet for us would be a lot.
Is larger than most of the spaces in our town.
How big is Some Girls? Is it like, you know, 700 or 800 square feet at the most?
About 500.
500 square feet, yeah.
I'm just thinking like Hartfield Lane. Suppose one day it decides to change to something else and they want to add on 25 percent.
Say they want to put a first floor on-
Yeah, they want to add on 25 percent to that. You're talking a major chunk of square footage.
Absolutely.
So maybe we limit it to amount of square footage or something of that nature.
So you would say 25 percent?
Up to 10, up to 5,000.
Do any of the others' documents get into this detail, or is it, is 25 percent something that you've picked up?
25 percent was in some of the other ordinances around the states that I looked at, so that's how I got to that, because it was actually used in other sample ordinances that I read. And once again, we threw it in there, you know, just as a starting point.
But that's a big addition.
So, for this community it is. I think for-
Yeah.
Oh, I think most communities, you say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add 25 percent of this building, why, why do I have to go to site plan approval?
Yeah.
They would say, because you have to. So I, I think that's a huge number. And, I mean, we have small buildings. It may, 25 percent of 500 isn't a lot, but, um, I mean, as I go around other communities, 25, I mean, they're going to say you have to go to site plan approval, you know.
Quite frankly, I think for Berkeley, considering what we have in our, this is only in the overlay district, which is a limited area of Berkeley, I think any addition to their footprint-
I do too.
Should trigger a site plan review. I'm sorry, I don't think there is a minimum threshold. If we were a sprawling community that had, you know, acreage and, you know, we were not a pen in two foot by, you know, two mile by one mile, you know, plus community, then I think you could have a trigger. But pretty much if you're going to change your footprint in any way, shape, or form, that structural changes, that affects parking, that affects-
It, well, it affects, it affects, uh-
Facade. I mean, there's just no way to stand these buildings.
Yeah, it affects paved areas, it affects, you know, parking, it affects all kinds of things, which are not under the preview.
Changes as well, right?
I'm talking vertical or horizontal, any of that, that should come to us.
Which is not under preview of the, the advisory committee.
Right, so say there's, um, let's take the gas station or something. They want to add or expand their beer cooler. So they add five feet along the entire length of the building. I mean-
That comes to site plan review now.
It does now.
It does now, right. I guess my opinion would be that's not something that should come to site plan review. If they can meet the standards of the ordinance, right, because they would still be bound by the setbacks, parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, then why are we reviewing it?
But it, let, let's take that a little further. If I give you a complete set of plans, not that we ever really get them that way, but if I gave you a complete set of plans that meet the ordinance to the T on my property, I have my architect do it, I have my architect do it, they're signed and sealed, everything is met, I'm not going for any variance. I give it to the city, in, under that theory, I should not have to come here because it meets the standards. I should just be able to pay my fee and build it. I shouldn't have to wait a month. I shouldn't have to go before Marty and talk about my EPIS. I should just wait or thin brick, and just do it. But, I mean, so I, I see what you're saying, but there's a point where-
There's an in-between, I think. Some communities do, do that. Some communities-
But we're small, so even if every building in Berkeley was under construction, it still wouldn't overwhelm our agenda.
Oh, no, I don't think it would overwhelm our agenda.
We had like two years here, we had like three site plan reviews, I mean.
But I just, I think there should be some minimum threshold, where if I'm a restaurant and I'm adding on 10 square feet to accommodate my new freezer, like, does it really need to come here?
Doesn't, doesn't, really what-
Most communities, yes.
But they should still meet-
Have you ever worked on Novi Rochester Hills? Sorry. That was uncalled for.
We do approve things administratively.
I will say, great strides have been taken.
Isn't, isn't really the, the, we're struggling to come up with a definition of significance.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, but what is that?
Doesn't necessarily translate into an automatic square foot figure. There needs to be more, more, more detailed definition.
Yes, there, I agree. There has to be a more detailed definition, and it falls somewhere between the high of 25 percent, which I think is too much too, to, you know, a level of five square feet.
It depends on the original size, the, the size of the building you're working with. It depends on the location.
It depends on where it is on the building. If it's in the back as a cooler, okay. It doesn't affect anybody.
Yeah.
If it's on the front, at the storefront, maybe it does affect everybody.
What we need to focus on is the way the community looks, the way this community looks.
Which is what the design guidelines are addressing.
But if we're changing the ordinance, it's not just for the downtown district, or the guidelines don't cover Woodward.
Oh, no, this is for everything.
Right.
Correct, so we need to not focus just on the guidelines if we're making a change to the city.
Commercial properties.
That's true.
Right, so I guess it also covers, yeah, Woodward, Greenfield, and 11 Mile.
Right, right.
So, I mean-
Yeah.
I mean, pick a number.
And those are some big buildings on 11 Mile, so.
I guess, what are the likelihood that somebody is going to do an addition, you know, five feet along the side of their-
Well, I mean, the, the freezer scenario in the back is very likely.
Yes, you're correct.
We have that prep kitchen, and we have the-
We just had one on 11 Mile.
Well, like Ellie's. Or didn't we, um, that golden thing, that golden new, didn't they add vestibule, and that's why they were here, was something like that? It was very small.
Well, he had other issues.
I understand.
They had a facade change too, though, right?
But we would turn that down if I recall.
Because, and that was, that was
It's a good example, yeah.
Less than 50 square feet, but because of ADA situations, he couldn't make it work, so we turned it down. It was a lobby thing. So that came before us, and-
But it didn't meet the standards, right? Because, just like you said, because of ADA, it didn't meet the standards.
But under this, whether it's even 25 percent or 10 percent, it never would have come for us.
But it should have been denied anyways because it didn't meet the ADA standards.
It could have been denied administratively.
It probably could have been.
So I guess I would be interested to know how Clausen addresses this and some other communities maybe that are similarly sized?
Or even, I wonder if RRC has, um, you know, a suggestion, because they're the ones who are really pushing for the administrative, you know, review, so maybe they have, uh, you know, some suggestion as to what best practice would be, so that might be a place to reach out.
Yeah, I don't think we want to pick an arbitrary number of 10 percent, because what does that mean? I think with a little input, but I do think 25 is way too much.
For us, because of the size of our buildings.
And 25 percent would come pretty dang close to kicking a facade change anyway, so, if you think about it.
So, in, in the spirit of keeping the design overlay district ordinance moving forward, I think at the next meeting, it would be good to have a sampling of some other, other- So in, in the spirit of keeping the design overlay district ordinance moving forward, I think at the next meeting, it would be good to have a sampling of some other, what other communities do, and maybe a recommendation, um, from maybe, um, the administration on what they, they would say is a reasonable starting point. It would give us somewhere to, to start the discussion. I, I just don't want to hold up the design review overlay district too terribly much.
And then still have a public hearing?
I think we can have a public hearing on the overlay district. I think that that language should just refer to this section of the ordinance.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
Like, it shouldn't say anything about twenty-five percent. It should just say.
In accordance with.
In accordance with section one thirty-eight, whatever it is on my glasses.
Six, seven, eight.
Yeah, whatever it happens to be, and then, because I think we all agree, it should just match whatever it is.
Absolutely, and I think that's a good idea.
Um, but I wouldn't, I don't want to belabor this administrative review discussion. And if we decide we, you know, are good with the one and two as they are, we could leave one and two and, and not include anything, and all of those tiny additions will continue to come before us. Which, if that's what you, if that's the, the will of the commission as a whole, then so be it.
I can check with other communities and I can see if, uh, MEDC has a recommendation on, you know, some type of threshold.
I think those are all good positive thoughts. Steps.
Okay, anything else on that item? No?
Just so we're clear, Madam Chair, um, are we setting the public hearing then for the January meeting for the overlay district?
Yes, and then the overlay language would just refer to this section of the ordinance?
Yes. I will get that, uh, notice published in the paper if that's.
Well, it's maybe influx, but you can revise your ordinance as needed, right?
Yeah.
I mean, even if the overlay district were to proceed with just having that one and two in there, then it could proceed as that and we could always change the.
Fair enough, absolutely.
Okay, um, next up then is the twenty nineteen meeting schedule. I don't know if there's anything much to add to this.
Not sure if we need a motion to approve it. I just, you know, wanted to get it before everybody, um. So it's, I defer to the wisdom of the commission.
I think a motion would be good, just so everyone acknowledges.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. McLean?
That was motion by Patterson, support by Buckler. Okay, Chadle?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
And Kapalansky?
Yes. Okay, liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report from their various other boards and committees and commissions? No? Okay, uh.
Couple of us attended last city council meeting, which was what, last Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they pretty much agreed, they had three items, um, on the, on the agenda, they pretty much agreed with us, everything done, unanimous or pretty close to unanimous.
Go ahead.
Just real quick, uh, the environmental advisory committee did meet. Um, Ms. Carmen, she was gracious enough to come and speak with us, and, uh, one of our committee members is now a, a liaison to the, uh, regional grant planning, um, process uh, that, uh, is, is underway with, uh, Berkeley Oak Park and Huntington Woods, uh, regarding, uh, transportation improvements throughout the region, so.
Great.
Uh, we, uh, we hope to, um, provide input to that on an ongoing basis.
Okay.
Park and Rec meets Thursday this week, so.
Good, they have a lot of events this month, so. Okay, then we're on to commissioner and staff comments. Mr. Trotto, anything?
Um, going back to the transmission shop, how mu, didn't any of those changes in the windows or any of those changes in the overhead doors have any impact on the fifty percent?
I do not believe there was a reduction in window size for that property.
Well, they were overhead doors. Now they're windows or different kinds of scenarios. I mean, looking at the dramatic changes to that shop, I'm surprised that didn't end up in front of us.
Yeah, based on the threshold for admin review, um, it was within that threshold.
Yeah.
That's it?
That was the only question I had.
Ms. Chadle?
Stay involved, have a wonderful holiday season, happy new year.
Same as what she said.
Oh.
Ms. Kempner?
Chadle.
Holiday greetings to everyone, have a happy new year, stay safe.
Ms. Buckler?
Merry Christmas and have a happy new year and a safe holiday season, please.
Mr. Richardson?
I, I second those, uh, those holiday sentiments. Um, I do have one thing I'd like to bring up. Um, um, and this has been on my mind for some time. Um, the, the ordinance, our various duties that we have under ordinance calls for us to make findings. We have to find, uh, uh, you know, that a proposal meets one or more criterion under various sections of our ordinances. Um, our motions to approve generally don't. Uh, the record doesn't, we, we never make a record that we've made those findings when we approve or, uh, as a case maybe disapprove a, uh, you know, a, um, a, a, a proposal. So, um, I'm just throwing this out there as food for thought. I, I think it would be, um, more proper if, um, um, and, and maybe we don't have to say this verbally, but, uh, the minutes at least should reflect that we have found, uh, that, um, you know, a, a proposal meets the criteria of the ordinance. I, I, I'm just a little tad uncomfortable that, uh, um, that's just sort of assumed or presumed by the a or nay vote. Uh, I'd like it said, either verbally or, uh, in the minutes that we made this finding. And, uh, it might seem like a minor thing to some people. I've got my lawyer hat on now, but I, I just want to, uh, be a little more comfortable with, uh, the way we approve things or just approve things. So, uh, maybe you could think about that, Tim, as well.
Mr. Smith?
You want me to bring?
Uh, yeah, you kept, Marty had a nice homework assignment for us all.
Well, I don't know, it depends on everybody's interpretation. Um, Chairman Kapalansky and I talked about this briefly. Way back when we began the master plan process fifteen years ago on the previous master plan, we were assigned a homework problem by the chairman. He said, I want everybody to go home with a map of Berkeley. You all have those, download it. And think of some ideas. What would you like to see in Berkeley? We came back in a month or so, or a month or two, and, uh, some of us had an idea, some of us had a dozen ideas, and we talked about them. Um, they, in the, in the, in the course of the previous master plan, we chose five or six of them to be, um, what do we call them? We called them, uh, projects, cataly, catalytic projects. Um, our big step here is to get into the master plan. We're trying to get there. We haven't yet been given a mandate by the, uh, city council. Um, and I think it'd be kind of nice for the planning commission to jumpstart that and say, hey, we're gonna look at our town. So, I'd like everybody to think about it. Maybe not for next month. It sounds like we have a lot of stuff to talk about next month. Something's happening. But, um, it's kind of a homework assignment, and I don't really want to put anybody on the spot. But it will force us as a board and individuals on this commission to really look at our city. And some of these ideas that came out last time were very matter-of-fact. Um, one of them happened, two of them came close, the others didn't happen. But there's some wacky ideas out there too, and there's nothing wrong with that. A master plan is what if? So, um, start thinking about that. Maybe we can define a little better next month. But I'd, I'd really challenge everybody to really start looking at the community. What would you like to see? There's no wrong answers. We did have a couple of yuck-yucks when people brought them up last time. Someone, well, you know, we, we talk about getting, um, um, for example, talk about getting people from Beaumont into downtown Berkeley for lunch. There's thousands of employees there. And, uh, it started out innocent enough and it turned into a pneumatic tube to shoot them back and forth, but then, that wasn't going anywhere. That's one of the sillier ones.
Somebody contact Elon Musk.
Yeah, he might work in tunnel. Um, so, but the things like, um, the, the, the Robina Activity Area, that started back then, and several of us, five or six of us came up, something needs to happen there, and that's the place to put it. Uh, one that almost happened was the bike path, uh, from Thirteen Mile down Coolidge to Twelve Mile on the west side of the road. That almost happened. Uh, and there's several others there that just didn't. So I'd like to challenge everybody, and Ms. Chairman can come up with a date when she thinks it's appropriate, but I'd like to challenge everybody, just take a map, just start writing on it. Should this be here? Should this be there? I'd like to see something happen here. And let's see what comes of it, because that shows that we, as a, as individuals on this board or on this commission, are thinking about our town. And maybe that'll get the other people, the other councils and things in this town, to start thinking, we gotta get this going. We can, let's jumpstart this, 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 um, uh, process.
I think that's a good idea, um, and maybe we can look at that for the February meeting, once we get these ordinance discussions out of the way. And hopefully that can coincide with an RFP out for our, our official, official kickoff of the master plan.
Because it is in the works, right?
It is in the works, yep, so hopefully that can start, you know, shortly after the new year, and I think this would be a great way to, to kick it off.
We're not gonna give anybody grades or anything, it's just, and, uh, yeah, but it's just, throw it, throw out ideas. I don't know what shape or form our master plan's gonna take next time, but I will say that proved to be a fantastic exercise on everybody's part.
You suppose with Uber and Lyft, that there's more potential for people to come downtown for lunch these days than there was back then?
They don't.
No.
You still have to wait.
Papa Joe is right there in the lobby.
Scooters, perfect. Get a scooter station in Berkeley. That, I mean, that can be the idea, that could be an idea. Some of us had expanded the, uh, the downtown into the next block, which probably wouldn't have gone very far, and it never, it never made it.
But it's worth talking about those sorts of things.
Absolutely.
So maybe tentatively for February, let's look at, at having a discussion about what everybody comes up with.
Have their homework done by then and we can go around and, uh. It's actually a little more, nobody likes giving reports. But, uh, it's actually was a very good exercise.
Great, good idea. Okay, I don't have anything further, Mr. McLean?
One more thing to add. Um, I've had some discussions with the planning consulting firm Carlisle-Wartman about possibly putting on a, uh, training session for both the planning commission and ZBA. Uh, was quoted a price. I, I need to compare it to what we have budgeted for training, but that's something that, that may be coming down the pipeline, so I, I got a little more homework to do on that. And then I may be pitching some dates to the, the planning commission and ZBA for, for that training.
What would the training be for?
Planning and zoning basics, um, basis for decision-making, uh, all the legal nuances.
Isn't the, I took that, there was a class that, I don't know, four years ago maybe, Huntington Woods hosted it on a Saturday.
You did do that.
And it was, it was, um, like by, I don't know if it was the Michigan Association of Planners that put it on? I think I still have the book.
The county has sporadically, um, put on classes like the Planning and Zoning Essentials.
Yeah, that was it.
Um, and they have, like, done a roadshow of it occasionally. They haven't done that recently. So I don't know if, if you wanted to try to reach out to Oakland County Planning and see if that's something they're considering doing in the near future. I think in the past couple of years, you've had to go to their facility.
This one was definitely hosted at Huntington Woods in their Publix.
They've, they've done it in the past. I just think the past, maybe two or three years it's been.
Could go. It was just a matter of, it wasn't a limit.
It was on a Saturday.
Yeah.
It wasn't, wasn't a limit on who could go, and I think the room was pretty full. We had ZBA and planning people from both cities there. And I think maybe even Pleasant Ridge was there, I don't know.
Yeah, they've, the counties worked with the Michigan Association of Planning in the past to do courses like that.
So the people, I mean, the people that were presenting it were professionals, but they, you know, kind of retained for this purposes, which I think is probably a more cost-effective option than private training, I don't know.
You might just want to reach out?
Yeah, and, and I've been sporadically, uh, scanning for training opportunities, both with the Michigan Association of Planning and Oakland County puts things on, and, uh, I've not seen anything on the horizon in the near term. Um, the planner from, uh, Carlisle that would do the training, a few years ago, they, they did a kind of a planning and zoning basics, and this is, this would be a similar version of that. I attended it in, in another community, and it was very valuable for both planning and ZBA.
We also had a few city council persons show up for that, too.
Yep, so that may be coming down the pipeline. Obviously, I'll be paying attention to, uh, any more cost-effective training opportunities on the horizon, and I can reach out to the Association of Planning as well to see what's, what's coming down the pipe.
Great.
And in the meantime, uh, if I don't see you all, wish you all safe and happy holidays and, uh, pick up again next year.
Yes, happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
And I think we're set then. Yep, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.